All right, welcome everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance. And would you mind leading us? The glasses? Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Just start with your name and then just you can just lead us.
My name is Parfet Akinyemi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its worth, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And can you say one more time your name?
Parfet Akinyemi.
Slower.
Parfet Akinyemi.
I'm not gonna... Parfet? Perfect. Oh, what a pretty name. Thank you so much for leading us in the pledge. Alrighty, we're gonna go down to 1.3 Approval of the Agenda.
I'll move.
Okay. Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina, vote please.
President Ceballos, hi.
Oh, Ms. Alexander, welcome. Thank you so much. You look great, by the way. I love your hair. Motion carries. 2.0 Special Presentations and Recognitions. And I will go ahead and pass it on over to Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you, President Ceballos. Good evening. I'm Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I'm the proud Director of Communications and Community Relations for SBCUSD. Before I introduce tonight's special honorees, I'd like to invite our Board and Superintendent to make their way to the front of the dais at this time. I'll also invite Executive Cabinet to be here along the ramp. Tonight, we are proud to recognize two outstanding student athletes who have made their mark at the highest levels of competition. Then, we will hold the swearing-in ceremony of our Student Board of Education members. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our amazing Communications Manager, Maria
Thank you, Mary Rhone. Student athletes, when I call your name, please come forward to be recognized along with your family. First, we're gonna honor Keith Cotledge. Keith just graduated from Cajon High School and is a true standout in track and field. In May, Keith claimed the California State Championship Title in the Triple Jump, an incredible achievement that reflects not only his raw talent, but also his dedication, work ethic, and commitment to excellence. Keith has made Cajon and our entire school district very proud. In June, Keith was named the Inland Boys Athlete of the Week after he captured the state championship and broke his own inland record with a winning leap of 51 feet and 4 and 1/2 inches. Congratulations. We can't wait to read all about you. Next, we're gonna recognize Connor McAllier, a recent graduate of Pacific High School. Connor is one of the top butterfly swimmers in all of California. He finished 10th at the CIF State Championships and won two CIF Southern Section Titles, setting a new standard for aquatic athletics at Pacific High. His performance in the pool has earned him well-deserved accolades and opened doors for his future in collegiate swimming. Congratulations, Connor. You certainly deserve another round of applause. And if his principal is here, we invite... Oh, Dr. Raimundo is here. Audience, let's give a big round of applause to both of these remarkable young men and their families. We also want to recognize their coaches who are here with us tonight. You represent the best of SBCUSD in your hometown. Cannot wait to cheer you on at the college level. Now, from student athletes to student leaders, this evening, we are also pleased to welcome the newest student members of the Board of Education. These students will be the voice of their peers and help guide decisions that impact you throughout the district. Our Student Board members will serve one school year in an advisory role to the Board of Education. Welcoming these students to the governing board is so vital to incorporating the voice of the more than 46,000 children we educate in our schools, right here in San Bernardino and Highland. At this time, I'd like to invite Board of Education President Myra Ceballos to come forward to administer the oath. I also ask that our Board Superintendent and Executive Cabinet members, please take a seat in the front row. Before President Ceballos conducts the official swearing-in, I'd like to acknowledge the families, the parents, and all the adult figures who stand behind each of these high school students. It is a testament to you that they care so much about their schools and their fellow classmates enough to spend part of their Tuesday twice a month with us. Please put your hands together for the families and the adult role models. And now, our Board President, Myra Ceballos, will take it away.
Awesome. Handing it over to me now? Okay, thank you. Well, welcome. And we're so, so, so excited, so come on down. So first is Damian Delgado. Perfecta. I can't see, so I'm perfect. I'm gonna apologize. And then, we have Carlos Valeria. Then, we have Brisa Asam. And then Ivoryon. Ivarian. What is it? Ivoryon, I apologize. And then, we have Aremi. Yes, awesome. So I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna read the swearing-in for you. So I want you to go ahead and please raise your right hand. And I want you to repeat after me. I'm gonna start it and then I'm gonna hand you the mic. And then, I want you to pass it along. And then, everybody say their names. Okay? All right, here we go. I...
Aremin Martinez.
Ivoryon Jones.
I, Brisa Hernandez Garcia.
I, Valeria Cervantes.
I, Carlos Barrios.
I, Parfet Akinyemi.
I, Damian Delgado.
Do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Awesome. Thank you so much. Give them a round of applause.
We now invite our Board of Education and Superintendent Ariano to please come forward Congratulations once again to each of our Student Board members. We are so excited for the energy and insight that you're gonna bring to the table this year. And now that our Board of Education and Superintendent have returned to the dais, Board President Ceballos, I return the meeting to you. And this concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Let's give them one more round of applause. We're so very excited to have you onboard. Y'all have some very big shoes to fill. I'm sure you're gonna do amazing, amazing this next year. Awesome. I also do wanna introduce Mr. Juan Lopez to our wonderful audience. He's going to be our interim Assistant Superintendent of HR while we go through our process. So welcome. We're so excited to have you. Moving on to 3.0 Public Comments. All right, I do apologize for that. So we're gonna go ahead and do 3.1 Receive Public Comments. So this is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. So first up, we have Mr. Larry Shackelford.
So good afternoon, good evening, Board President Ceballos and Board. I see there's a few of them missing though. Where is everybody? Superintendent Ariano and Cabinet. We were here a couple months ago, and you know, we're talking about the commitment from the golf community, right, that exists now in this district. Because of what you guys have been doing for years, supporting the after-school golf program, there's a lot of kids playing golf now in the city. This year, we had the first annual District League Championship. And I'm kinda dragging my feet right now because we're hoping a few more people show up. We told them about six. We got a little ahead of schedule. But no, so we had all the middle school students competing in golf competition at Shannon Hills Golf Course. And we have some representatives here. Golden Valley Middle School won the championship. Richardson Middle School won the on-course competition. Somebody help me out? Yeah, there was a six-hole on-course competition. Who else won what? Rodriguez placed second. Cajon... Cajon had the long drive, both the long drive... Oh, I'm sorry. Chau... Cajon, yeah, sorry. Chavez had the long drive, you know, winner and runner-up. And you know, Mr. Tillman had told me a long time ago, hey, man, just get them out on the course, right? Just get them out on the course and have a tournament. And we did it, and it kinda worked. It kinda surprised me. I kinda felt bad for us dragging our feet for as long as we did because the kids really competed and they really... You know, we have one of them that's gonna speak in a second from Golden Valley. And then, a month or so ago, a few weeks back, there's a drive, chip, and putt competition that's sponsored by PGA? Who does drive, chip, and putt? So there's a drive, chip, and putt competition out of the woodwork. We had a bunch of kids that were in the competition. And not only that, we had four young ladies that advanced to the sub-regional competition on August the 9th at the TPI Center in Oceanside. And if they advance from there, they go to the regional competition that's in Hawaii. And they haven't get here yet? Dang it. And just the other day, one of them playing at Colton Golf Course had a hole-in-one. First hole-in-one. We think it's the first hole-in-one of any of the students in the program, right? So you know, the whole point was, we just wanted to come back and say thanks again. I know there's a couple more people here that are on the list to talk, but just the question was commitment. So thanks.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing. Up next, I'm gonna go ahead and call David.
All right. Good evening, Board members and any San Bernardino residents here in attendance. I don't know if anybody's here. My name is David Krevanek, and I'm a recently retired San Bernardino County Schools math teacher of 33 years. And I'm gonna make this simple. In addition to golf being a great teacher of integrity, honor, good morals, and life skills, by nature, golf is a game of hope. If anybody has ever played golf, it's just a game of hope. And these San Bernardino communities can all use an opportunity and avenue to cultivate hope. In my seven months-plus with 61 Golf, I've witnessed an abundance of hope. And I just wanted to thank you all for your support and allowing us to provide this opportunity of hope for these kids. I've really seen a lot, and I've just joined the program a little while ago, and it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Up next, Liliana.
I've come to share my experience at 61 Golf. I was a part of Golden Valley's championship where we won. And I've only come to share my experience and the enjoyable moments at my time with 61 Golf. I have truly learned the sport. It is very fun. It's good exercise, and it's always pushing me to do my best when I go. And my coaches, Coach Shaq, Coach Mike, Coach David, they have always given me great advice, both in life and in golf. And I just do hope that they do get more funding, and hopefully for next year, in schools, it does count as a real sport. For at my school, it is only a club, and I would hope that it does become a real sport for my school.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And I don't believe I have any other... Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out and sharing with us. It's always, you know, good and informative for us. So keep coming. Keep coming and updating us.
Oh, he forgot this. I was wondering where that was. Just a little funny story. He meant to bring this, but he forgot it. But he went to get it. He got it. He got it. So the story behind this is, you know, the Stanley Cup is a perpetual trophy. Got it?
You speaking to the mic, sorry.
You know, the Stanley Cup is a perpetual trophy, and I think, you know, in the professional golf world, the British Open is perpetual trophy. This is gonna be a perpetual trophy for the championship. Right now, Golden Valley has it. Next year, we're gonna see who has it. And then, you know, hopefully, years and years from now, it'll be a huge trophy. So these kids got the first one going, so we're gonna keep it going.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and congratulations, especially to Golden Valley. All right, up next, we have... Please, please correct me if I said that. Awesome.
You said a good... It's a hard name. How are you guys? My name is Ahmed Locat. I just thought I'd come over here to introduce myself to you guys. I'm the new field representative for Assembly Member Robert Garcia's office. I do have business cards here for you guys. I will be distributing to you guys. I do look forward to engaging with each and every one of you to see, you know, what our office can do for the school board. So I really do look forward to that. And I am the new port of contact for San Bernardino. I was happy to take the beautiful city of San Bernardino from Robert. But I look forward to engaging with each and every one of you guys, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. You can go ahead and give those to Karen over there. She'll... Thank you so much. Up next, we have Lori...
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Cabinet, Board, and Superintendent Ariano. My husband has been a district employee for over 25 years, and I am a former student with the district. I attended Barton and Thompson Elementary, Serrano Junior High, and graduated from San G in 1995. And my mom was also a classroom paraprofessional in this district in the 80s through the early 2000s. I wanted to come tonight and thank the school board and Superintendent Ariano for your commitment in supporting every single student in this district to have equitable access to a quality education while also supporting and trusting your district educators and staff to deliver that quality education in an inclusive and safe learning environment. While not perfect, you continue to grow and work together, actively listening to each other's views. You make sure district matters are professionally handled while keeping your students a top priority. I appreciate the continued efforts of the Board, Cabinet, and Superintendent. May the district staff and students continue to shine this coming school year.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, Board members, educators, and community leaders. My name is Wendy Joseph, a mother, a grandmother, a gun violence survivor, and a public health advocate. I've spent the last eight years fighting for safer schools and stronger communities. And I'm here tonight because our children are being pushed out of classrooms and into courtrooms. The school-to-prison pipeline is real. On an average, black students are three and a half times more likely to be suspended. Students with disabilities make up about 13% of enrollment, but 25% of school arrests. One suspension triples a student's chance of entering the juvenile justice system. This is not discipline. I know this pain personally. My son, Joseph Lee, was killed in a set-up robbery by teens with easy access to firearms. And after his death, I founded Pray for the Prey 827 to give victims a voice and push for prevention, not punishment. We've made progress, and I helped pass the California Assembly Bill 28 that was signed by Governor Gavin Newsom July 1, 2024, along with Moms Demand Action and Every Town Survivor Network, which now funds school safety and violence prevention. But we need to go further. I'm asking this board to... I'm asking this board to adopt the following solutions. Restorative justice instead of suspensions, mental health counselors, not more police, after school programs that give kids purpose, bias and train, trauma training for every single educator, and a commitment to use AB 28 funds to support these efforts. Let's stop criminalizing trauma and start treating. Let's build a system that sees our children as worthy of investment, not incarceration. Thank you for your time, but the AB 28, I want to further this. The AB 28 funds primarily through the California Violence Intervention and Prevention, which is the CalVIP grant program receives the largest share of the AB 28 revenue, which is 75 million annually. And I'm standing before you to let you know that these resources are available for our children. Um, so we do have evidence-based solutions for the school to prison pipeline that you can incorporate into your advocacy, policy proposals and future speeches. There's also an opportunity through Every Town Survivor Network, the Student Fellowship Program that's officially open yesterday, July 14th, Monday, through August 4th, 2025, where they're accepting applications for volunteer advocacy programs as designed for students between the ages of 18 to 26. I wish that the kids who were kicked out of Job Corps, you know, could have taken advantage of these programs, but people could only work so fast. And so they're there for students who've been personally impacted by gun violence where they've witnessed it, but been threatened by it, survived it, or had someone or a loved one taken by it. Um, and you know, their story has power to it. We need more leaders out there. And I didn't get a chance to, um, you know, print, print it out to everyone, but there is, it's, you can attend personally. Um, it's fully funded training weekend in Washington DC in October. So I would encourage it is, um, I do have it in an email. Um, it just arrived yesterday and I was really excited and I was actually at the pool today painting nails on my grandkids. When I figured out, I'm like, oh my gosh, it's a school board meeting, you know? So I apologize for not having that, but I will leave a copy of the email in the back and I'll put my email address, see if I could just forward it to you. I know it's kind of ghetto, but that's the only way that I can do it right this minute, you know, because it just arrived yesterday. So um, I just want to say thank you guys for all your hard work. Keep standing up for these kids. These kids need all the support that they can get. I'm just afraid because I am, um, earning my bachelor's in criminal justice specializing in homeland security and crisis management. I got like 20 credits left. And I've been doing, like done violence advocacy for over eight years and I'm really afraid of this school to prison pipeline. They are trying to defund the school system, but they keep throwing money into the criminal justice system and I hope you guys see this before. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out and, and congratulations on your school. You can go ahead and give Karen whatever information you need to and she'll pass it along to us. Thank you so much. Up next we have Ms. Christina Marquez. Welcome. So good to see you.
Good evening Cabinet. Good evening Board. Good evening, Mr. Ariano. In 2001, I took my first fifth grade class up to science camp up in the mountains. And what I did learn from that that stood out to me was they had difficulty doing the hikes. So back in 2001, we got back and then every year after that to 2025, I have my students walking our fields to get them ready to go up to science camp because you can't stop in the middle of a trail and say, I can't go any further. Well, we can't leave them behind, so they have to keep doing this. Before I give you the next information, I'm going to say, do not believe everything you see posted on social media. I've been doing this since 2001. This year I had three students and I'll just give you their first names because I don't know if I can give their last names. Arturo, Eric and Joshua, who completed 100 miles. They became the 100 Mile Club. And that was me working with Coach Jabari Clayton doing this. We took a great picture together, but not quite the picture I wanted. Now, one thing I did, I visited my campus today and at the end of last year, we had a sprinkler problem and we had water gushing all over. Today, the grass is dry. The reason, they cannot fix the leaks or the sprinklers because it's under the road that goes right through the middle of our campus. I sent pictures to one of the board members who I'm sure will share it with you so that you can see this. But I would like to continue that club and hopefully have more than just three students doing that 100 Mile Club. They got some really nice t-shirts that went with that also. But just so that you can keep an eye, I did let the city know last night that there was a problem and I don't know if they'll look into it or if the school, you, the board will look into it. But it'd be nice to have our field at least green, the parts that we can use. At this point of the city informed me that it's going to be about October until we finally get the entire field back. And in what condition, I'm not sure, but I would appreciate any help that you can give us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, and I believe that is all for, oh, we have Ms. Medina.
Yes, I wanted to ask if we can move, um, seven, let me see, 7.1, um, forward before we go into closed session only because that way they don't have to wait until afterwards, might as well, if they're here present.
So can I, do we have consensus? Okay, yes, we're going to go ahead and move that up. So seven, oh, Ms. Alexander is that? Okay, sorry. I keep forgetting you're there. Um, so we're going to go ahead and move 7.1 up, Citizens Oversight Committee 2024-2025 Annual Report, Annual Written Report. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Comnack.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Sabios and, uh, the board. I wanted to bring up Mr. Gilbreth right now, who is our Citizens Oversight Committee President, who is going to give us a brief update on the just completed year of our 2425 school year. Please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and, uh, board. Thank you for moving that up. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, as you were all note, uh, notified, my name is Kevin Gilbreth and I am currently the Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee. Um, and primarily Measure T and Measure N Bond Citizens Oversight Committee. It is my pleasure to present the committee with its annual report. Uh, I've been on this committee since 2021 and we oversee, uh, the projects that have been completed, ongoing and that will be in the future. Uh, my personal connection to this is I went to San Bernardino Schools. My wife went to San Bernardino Schools. My children graduated from San Bernardino Schools and we still live here. Beyond what most people think of why we still have a lot of hope. And my son is currently teaching in a rival district, but there's some family history to that district, but he is now coaching at his alma mater. So, uh, we believe in the school district and I believe in this committee. The committee is legally charged under the Education Code and the California Constitution with direct taxpayer review of the bond measures and with informing the public about expenditures of the bond proceeds to ensure that spending conforms to the bond language approved by voters. Sorry, that's the legal part I have to read. Uh, I'm here to inform the board and the public regarding the committee's findings from the 20th year of the bond from July 2023 through June of 2024. The committee has prepared an annual report to highlight our activities for this period and to certify that the district is in compliance with the requirements of the California Constitution. Specifically, we are here to certify that the following requirements have been fulfilled. Proceeds from the bond sales were used for the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation or replacement of school facilities, including the furnishing and equipment of school facilities or the acquisition or lease of real, uh, real estate property for school facilities. A list of specific school facilities to be funded by the bond have been prepared. An annual independent performance audit has been prepared to ensure that the funds were expended uh, appropriately for these projects listed. The information was validated by the independent auditing firm of ID Bailey and their reports submitted for the period ending June 30th, 2024, which I believe the gentleman behind me is here to give. The committee members remain impressed with the district's continued progress in construction of new schools, enhancing learning environments for the community. This is especially evident in Pacific High School as you have seen a significant reconstruction and uh, in my own opinion, a completely new pro, school. Uh, with this undergoing significant, significant modernization, including the addition of a new performing arts center, a new student center and a state of the art CTE biomed facility. Similarly, San Bernardino High School has experienced a remarkable transformation of its own as well as many of our schools with all new paint and upgraded facilities. Those highlighted are the modernization of the, the San Bernardino High School's very famous historic auditorium. The Cardinal Child Development Center stands out as a world-class facility, truly one of a kind for our community. The Citizens Oversight Committee members and officers wish to thank the board, superintendent, for their support and appreciate this opportunity to serve the taxpayers of this district and to inform the public regarding the Measure T and Measure N bond funds. It is my pleasure to serve the district in this capacity as a member and the community chair, and I would encourage other people to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, for that report.
We have, uh, from ID Bailey, Mr. Scott Braddock, CPA who did our, uh, who's going to share the report. Uh, this is actually associated with Action Item 9.2.
Good evening. My name is Scott Braddock. I'm a manager with ID Bailey, the district's external auditors. And I'll be presenting the financial and performance audit report for the district's building fund Measures T and N as of June 30, 2024. Uh, there's two elements to this report. The first is the financial audit portion and then later in the document is the performance audit portion. So I'll begin with the financial audit, which is on, it begins on page one. Um, we issue an opinion on the financial statements. We opine on whether they are, uh, fairly stated and free from material misstatement. And of the different types of opinions, we can issue an unmodified opinion is essentially a clean opinion, meaning that there was nothing identified that resulted in a modification or a qualification of our opinion. And that's the type of, of, of opinion we issued on the financial statements was an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. Um, I next like to go to page 17, which is the Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Non-Compliance. And this report, uh, essentially just details whether or not there were any deficiencies identified either in relation to an internal control or in relation to compliance. And, um, none were identified in either of those areas. Page 19 is the financial statements finding page where we indicate that there were no findings reported. Page 21 is the Auditor's Resort, uh, Auditor's Report on Performance. So this was the second part of the report that I was referring to was the performance audit. Uh, the performance audit consists of us, consists of us, um, selecting and sampling and testing expenditures charged to Fund 21, the building fund, to, uh, determine whether or not internal controls exist over those expenditures as well as whether the expenditures are compliant. And, uh, I'll proceed to page 24, which kind of summarizes the procedures we performed for the performance audit. So item three on page 24 indicates that we, we tested 13 transactions totaling about $404,000 for Measure T, which represents 87% of Measure T's total expenditures. Uh, for Measure N, we tested 41 transactions totaling about 41.5 million, which represents 92% of the Measure N expenditures. And through our testing of those expenditures, we indicate down below in the audit results section, the results of our tests indicated that in all material respects, the district, the district has properly accounted for the expenditures held in the building fund and that such expenditures were made for authorized bond projects. So both from an internal control standpoint and from a compliance standpoint, uh, district's doing great. No issues identified. And that, that pretty much concludes the presentation. Um, are there any questions?
Hi, Christina. So thank you so much.
All right. Thanks. Have a good night.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and go to 4.0 Public Hearing, 4.1 Resolution to File Applications for State Allocation Board Administered Programs. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
This public hearing then is now closed. Be it resolved, the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education approves and is in support of filing necessary applications under programs administered by the SAB and DGS for the proposed project, I'm sorry, for the proposed projects. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the individuals identified below to physically sign all documents and papers or submit documents via OPSC, OPSC Online that are associated with SAB administered programs. Any previous authorized district representatives not listed below are to be removed from the list of district representatives. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Vote please. Ms. Felicia, Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.0 Closed Session, 5.1 Closed Session, Public Comments. Do we have any?
We do not.
All right, so 5.2 Closed Session Agenda. We will adjourn for Closed Session now. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and get started. 5.2 Closed Session, Closed Session. No, sorry. Uh, 6.0 Actions Report from Closed Session, 6.1 Claim Number 202425001. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement authorization claim number 202425001, the amount of 3.75 million. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please.
President Sabios, aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. 6.2 Claim Number Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement authorization for Claim Number 202425002 in the amount of 3.75, um, million. Motion please.
I'll move.
Motion by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Vote please. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 6.3 Claim Number 202425003. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement authorization for Claim Number 20225003 in the amount of $3.75 million. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Grande, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, 6.4 Expulsion of Student. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts, and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following student with the identification number as listed below, in accordance with Board rules and regulations and in compliance with ED Code Section 48900. Can I get a motion?
Subvoted, second.
By Mr. Santos, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please, Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries, 6.5 Lift Readmittive Expulsion of Students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Motion, please.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Santos, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries, 6.6 Petition to Expunge/Rescind Ceiling of Record or Modify Youth Court or Expulsion. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following student with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Motion please.
Move, second.
Move by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, 6.7 Other Closed Session Action Items, there are none at this time. 8.0 Board Discussion, 8.1 Lead Summit, 14 Sponsorship Request. If the Board recalls, this was an item that was brought before discussion two board meetings ago, and it's being now brought back. The Subcommittee did meet, the, the Policy Subcommittee did meet, and we talked about, you know, the policy and moving forward, we decided that it would take a little longer to create and develop the, you know, policy and the forms, that we didn't want to leave this organization waiting or hanging. So I, what I asked is, I asked Karen to go ahead and send him, Mr. Dr. Murillo, the questions that the Board had posed or asked that day, for him to respond to those, which he did, and he did return the email to us. So you all should have received an email with those responses that Dr. Murillo replied to. So at this time, it's now back to us. So I don't know if there's any other discussions. The requests originally had been for, I think 15,000 we had, I think in the past we had, for other organizations, we've done 5,000, I think some have done 3,000, so I'm not sure what the Board would like to support at this time. So I'll open it up. Ms. Medina?
I'm trying to look through the messaging of, because before it would be Leads Weeks, which would be a whole week. In this case, I'm trying to find out, is it one day? I believe it's, or Advocacy Days, and so I don't know if this was for one day, or is this for several days? Because in the past it was several days?
I believe it is one day.
And in the past, we've contributed $10,000 for several days, and so I, I know, we're trying to be consistent as well with other organizations that we've, we've contributed, or not contributed, but sponsored. And we want to keep aligned with those numbers because we know, at the end of the day, all of this does accumulate, and we've been getting additional requests. So I would suggest with 5,000, because it is one day. And I know the original request was 15, and in the past we've done 10,000, so I would move for 5,000.
All right, so Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and as Ms. Rosales Medina has put out a number and a motion, I would probably have said 10,000, and I know we had some homework done and wanted to see how many kids that it would impact, because I know this has a pretty big impact, but I would be in agreement with 5,000 as well. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion for 5,000 by Ms. Medina and a second.
I'll second the motion.
A second by Dr. Wyatt. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Santos? Motion carries, 9.0 Action Items, 9.1 Personnel Report.
As presented.
Still moved. Move by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Santos. Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries, 9.2 Accepting, Acceptance of Building Fund Financial and Performance Audits Report, Audit Reports. Thank you.
Still moved.
Second.
Move by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, 9.3 Arts and Music, Music in Schools Funding Annual Fiscal Report. Still moved.
Still moved.
Can I get a, okay, thank you. I'll second. Move by Mrs. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina? Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Sorry, I keep forgetting. Motion carries, 10.0 Consent Items, 10.1 Approval of Consent List. Do we have any to pull? Okay, can I get a motion for 10.1?
I'll move.
Okay. Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please, Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries, 11.0 Reports Commons by Union Organizations, 11.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
11.2 California School Employees Association.
No report.
11.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
11.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
All right, 12.0 Reports and Comments by Board Members. I will go ahead and start to my, right, Ms. Medina?
Thank you so much. I'm really excited for the new school year that's coming up, and I also want to get consensus for, from the Board to try to have a Policy Subcommittee meet regarding parking policy, and just to review and possibly make recommendations. So I would like to get consensus on regards to the parking policy.
You have consensus.
Okay.
Ms. Alexander?
Yeah, I just have a question. What do you mean by parking?
So regarding, you know, how entities are able to, you know, come into the parking lot and park and, and what that looks like, I really don't know too much. Anyone would like to review it? That's why I'm making the suggestion for the policy to review and possibly make recommendations if needed.
Okay, but does that apply to BOE or sites like?
So it applies to all sites. I think the policy would include all sites within the district, yes.
Okay, okay, I agree.
Awesome, so you have consensus.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say congratulations to all of our students who graduated. Is it yesterday? Yes, yesterday, for the Superintendent's Summer Graduation. It was amazing, and the families, you know, we, we know how hard these students and families and friends took for them to accomplish that, and, and I'm really proud of the fact, I know Suda spoke on it, and many were present there. They took their time during the summer, when they could be trying to do less work, or if not, relax a little bit, but, and then of course, our Superintendent Ariano spoke very well that, you know, just encouraged the whole family. So I appreciate you, you know, creating that momentum of positive and, and showing that it, they did make it through tough, tough times and through grit, so. And on his birthday, and on his birthday, and we did end up singing for, singing a happy birthday, but yes, exactly. So I just want to say congratulations to all of our graduates who have been able to make it through. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Grande?
Yes, I just want to give a prayer out to my friend and former teacher's aide during the summer, Maria Madrano Lazar. She, she in 2020 during the midst of a COVID crisis, when we had, we were forced to teach from home, she's the one that made the Channel 11 news, and she really shined the light on our school district, I believe, by teaching her children in a pup tent, because her house was taken over by her two children who were learning, distance learning inside, and so she made the news. Later on, she finished her internment, she was an intern teacher. She became a teacher after working in my room, and she worked for Heather Lozano during the, during the year, and she went on to become a teacher. And she moved just recently, I think a couple of years ago, to our Martin Luther King Middle School, and there she began a Best Buddies, first one ever. And her and Heather Lozano are powerhouses with the Best Buddies Program. It's very successful. I think I heard last time it was like 1,000 kids. It's just remarkable. Well, she's fallen on very sad times. We did do a GoFundMe, but at this, at this stage, I just, I would like to ask if you could send her prayers. I know it prayer works, and it really does help. I myself was near death during COVID, and I had 600 people on a prayer will that my daughter did for me, and I, I made it through just fine. So I'd like you to think about her and put her in thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Her husband passed away, I'm sorry. Three children. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to start off by telling our Associate Superintendent, Mr. Terry Comnick, thank you personally and publicly for, he was a coach for me recently in a program that I was in, and as you all know, he's an amazing tutor and coach and mentor, and just an incredible man in person, and he makes things easy sometimes when they're very difficult. And so thank you, Mr. Comnick, for being there for me. I do want to ask the Board for consensus to put on the agenda to discuss the Valley College 100th Anniversary. Some of us were very fortunate to go to the San Bernardino Symphony Celebration, Florida, 4th of July on the 5th of July, which was an amazing event. I want to say that, that many of our students and our families, families from the community were there. That was hopefully our goal, to send many of them there, and we had a packed house and just an amazing, amazing show by the symphony, and of course, an amazing fireworks show, so. But on top of that, I was talking to a lot of the folks over at Valley, and I know we were there, I think, for their 95th anniversary, but the 100th obviously is a huge, huge deal. I believe Valley College is one of the oldest community colleges in our state, and now I'm looking to hopefully support them in their anniversary. I know we have an incredible partnership with them with our dual enrollment program, amongst many, many other things, and I know that, that should be a pretty easy thing to do. Don't know what the sponsorship level is at this point. I'm sure we could find out, but I think that's going to be an exciting, exciting celebration. I think it's in March of 2026, so something to put on our radar early, because I think most of us would love to be there for that. A number of us were at the Jaden Daniels' first community celebration event, and huge shout out to Mary Rhone Goodman and her team for really coordinating that and putting it together. I know that's a huge, huge challenge and not an easy thing to do, as many of us know, but they did it without a hitch, and I think it was a huge, huge success. And amazing job to our M&amp;O folks, to Tom Pace, Toby Bushy, Toby's absolutely amazing. I think if you ever worked with him, he's just fantastic, Mr. Comnick. I'm sure you probably know that as well, and Tom always has been. Our San Bernardino PD folks were out there, they, they really stepped up their game. Chief Goodman, Dr. Chief Goodman, want to give a huge thank you to him, and Lieutenant Plummer, don't know if he gets to hear that enough, but Lieutenant Plummer, fantastic man, and he gave Chief a shout out over there to Polino, so you know, that's my mentor. So G V had very kind words to say, and just want to say thank you to Jaden as well. Jaden Daniels, JD5, as we all know, just wow. Woo, I got emotional, that kid is absolutely amazing, and what amazes me even more is his humility. He is the most humble young man you're ever going to meet that has that level of success. I mean, a lot of us have seen him over the years, gotten to meet him, celebrate with him, and his level popularity now, it's unbelievable. It's like beyond superstar status. I think Boss already said, yeah, he's more popular than Brad Pitt now, so, I know you know who that guy is, pretty popular in our days, but yeah, it's just, it's unbelievable that the kids, how they just, they look up to him, and he, he just loves them all. He is such a simple young man, and just having the opportunity to just be in his presence, and I got to meet a new young man, too, what we, I guess they call him the sports, the next. Mr. MJ is his name, like Michael Jordan, but he's going to be our freshman quarterback at Cajon. Really neat kid, and it's the next, and I said, hey, Jaden, you know? Really neat kid, and it's the next, and I said, hey, Jaden, you know, I said, that's the next, it was, I heard. Which I thought was pretty cool, that he knew of that young man and MJ was in the room just in amazement, like he's like, oh my God, I want to go talk to him. But it was just exciting to see that next generation of our kids, like we saw this evening, coming. And having those mentors to look up to and for them to be there for them, I think that's what makes this position amazing as a board member. It really does, to be able to be a part of that, to get back to our community, to be a part of an amazing district, I'm going to say that. And I told the young man out there today when I was talking to him, everywhere I go, I talk us up. I never let anybody say anything bad about San Bernardino and I won't because I believe in this city, I believe in our school district more than anything. Believe you in Boss, and I'm going to end on my note by saying a belated happy birthday. But I know San Bernardino City is definitely, San Bernardino City School District and our city, I'll throw them in a little bit. It's definitely on the move and we're definitely developing systems of excellence. And I couldn't be more proud of us right now and of this board and this team that we have. I think anything's possible with this district right now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos?
Just one comment, he said it all, I was at that event this Saturday and I can't add anything to it. You're, you're welcome, other than that, I don't have any comments. Yes, I, I was in a suit and he was in shorts and flip flops, so I was ill-prepared for the day.
Thank you. Mrs. Alexander?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of things, I'm currently in Napa attending the California Association of Black School Educators Conference. And I'm here with Kimber Sargent and Dr. Will Greer and I have to give them a shout out because they put on a great presentation on funding and planning for equity from the central office. And not only was it a great collaboration, but the information that they provided was impressive and related to what we're doing to support as, as it relates to the different programming. And then Kimber went into just the aspect of where the funding is coming from and also the sustainability of those fundings despite what we're doing with from a federal funding perspective. So wanted to just say how good a great job they did, but most importantly, just representing our district. While we're on the same lines, I, I know that there's been a lot of uncertainty around the funding source from the federal level and just it being frozen, so I'm curious to know what our mitigation strategy is as relates to how things unfold. Also, just moving in that direction, just wondered if we had any conversation with our vendors that provide resources to our community, particularly with food insecurity. So our partnership with Succi Food Services as well as other companies that provide us with those resources, have we checked in with them to make sure that they're okay from a funding source and it doesn't impact our resources to our community? And then secondly, related to that, I wanted to make sure that if we could consider going back and looking at, and this is what I like for us to do, going back, looking at our vendors where we have supported them from a supplier standpoint, where they're within a quarter of a million or above, so we've, we have approved the contract for a quarter million and above. And going back and looking to see if they have any type of social responsibility outreach. And maybe that's another way to assist us in our community related to food insecurities or some other resources in case we have to look back at our financial sources. So from a mitigation standpoint, the recommendation is to go back, look at those suppliers that we have approved a quarter million and above to see if they have social responsibility outreach. The other item is in reference to link learning. I'm excited that school is about to start and we have less than a month. And I'm just curious to know, related to our linked learning programs, what it looks like in terms of what students have already been either assigned to that linked learning program? And what is the capacity to make sure that there's access to all the students per school? So I realize that the pathways might change by high schools, but what I'm more curious to know about is what is the current inventory? And what are we looking at in terms of availability? So we're setting up every student for success at each one of those schools that have access to pathway programs. And lastly, thank you to JD5, it was a great event. A lot of people were out there and we really appreciate him just coming back into his hometown and bringing all the joy and the smiles on his faces. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina?
All right, can I add, only because Ms. Alexander did mention the funding, federal funding? If they can give us an update, I know that we're okay for the first year, but then what that may, could potentially look like for the following years after?
Thank you. Thank you, and I mean, I, I really don't have much to add, like Mr. Santos said, I think it's all been said. Just thank you to everyone, I hope everyone is having a really, really good summer. We are looking forward to receiving you all back and, you know, just getting started with the year 2025, '26 school year. Like Ms. Medina said, the graduation yesterday was, was awesome. And, you know, just a really special shout out to Brianda, I think, what's her name, Mr. Ariano? From Sierra, Ms. Brianda Aguilar? Aguilar, so she was a student that Mr. Ariano had mentioned her name at the, at the ceremony as well. I think she was a little shy, but just extraordinary to watch, you know, she's a student that had reached out to, to me in an email and I think she was really, really behind, she was actually looking to go into adult school and she had reached out and said, hey, you know, I want to, you know, they're not taking me in adult school until, you know, I don't, I think next, sometime in August, can I get started on some summer classes? Well, she ended up graduating, our summer graduation, so she put in the effort, she, you know, just really buckled, buckled up and, and we were really happy to see her there graduating, so, you know, just, our students work hard, our, our staff work, work hard. So, you know, thank you so much for everything that you're doing, you continue to do even, even once school's out. We really appreciate all of the dedication, let's just keep doing what we're doing. I think we're, you know, there's a lot of things happening in the world today, but I think we continue to, you know, stay as a, as a hope of, you know, light. We continue to shine as best as we can here and, you know, continue to provide that hope for, for all of our families. And so we will continue to do that, that is our commitment, that's my commitment, I know that that's this board's commitment, the superintendent and everybody. So, so yeah, you know, we'll see you hopefully soon, and Mr. Ariano?
Thank you, President Cevallos. Want to begin, just always want to acknowledge our gratitude for our translators that are here at our board meeting. Thank you to our awesome school police force, thank you for being here. And Mr. Cunningham, you get credit today for staying the whole meeting. I usually give you partial credit because you leave before I speak, but today you stayed, so I appreciate you, my brother, good to see you. I want to start off today by just giving Juan Lopez a formal welcome. And thank you for serving as our interim assistant superintendent of HR and we're all looking forward to working with you and, and learning from you. You've had a great career in public education, so there's much to learn from you, so thank you for accepting this position, means a lot to all of us, so welcome, sir. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Lorian Dahl, I really appreciate her coming here today and validating the work that we're doing in terms of inclusive excellence and that she sees our work and our commitment. And so I just wanted to personally thank her for being here today. And I also want to thank Wendy Joseph who spoke here today. I know many times we get members of the community that come and share national data, state data, but sometimes don't understand that we're doing some work already on, on a lot of that. So I know in the past, I've reached out to many people and sat down with them. So I'm going to ask Sandra, maybe someone in your department can reach out to Ms. Joseph and share with her all the things that we're working towards restorative justice and youth court and socio-emotional support, all of the validated things that she spoke of today. It'd be nice to get an ally and have her help be an ambassador on the district, so Wendy, I, I appreciate you coming here today. And then in response to board member Alexander, thank you for always asking great questions and I always say, questions make us better. So one aspect of your question today, which is good for the community here today is, San Bernardino City Unified School District is that, at, at, we could be losing five to seven million dollars this year in the title funding freeze that is being recommended by the federal government at this point. Now, I know Governor Newsom and I believe 20 other governors have filed a counter lawsuit looking for injunctive relief. But for the 25, '26 school year and working with Terry and his amazing staff, we believe that if those funds are completely frozen during a 25, '26 school year, we can cover that freeze of money or loss of money for this year. But to, to the point that was made earlier, what we, what we would need to do moving forward would have to be another conversation. But for this school year, those funds can be covered. So we will be looking closely at what happens with that lawsuit, if there is injunctive relief. And I really love your idea and concept of looking at the social responsibility of some of those companies that have larger contracts and just seeing how they could probably help us with some of those insecurities that support our families. So appreciate the suggestion, Ms. Alexander, we, we will work on that, Ms. Medina, we'll work on that, so, sir. So as was mentioned today, we have the honor of being present at the superintendent's summer graduation. And I also want to thank Dr. Suda Vinketis and everyone that was involved in putting together this wonderful ceremony. We had 125 high school graduates that just needed that extra little few weeks to finish, so we're very proud. Of those 125, we also had seven students from our adult education program that were able to finish, so it was a great event. Ms. Medina gave a great speech to the student body, so thank you very much for representing the Board of Education. And, you know, one of the messages that we had is the, the Japanese proverb of fall seven times, stand eight. Now, this was a great example of, of students who may have fallen seven times, but they got up in eight time and finished. So it was a great event, so thank you to everyone that was involved and congratulations to all of our graduates, next slide please. And I want to let the board know and the community know that our Paxum Paxum Welcome Resource Center is open and open for business. I know we're very slowly but surely moving all of our employees into their spots on the first, second and third floor. We're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony on August 20th. I wanted to let the board know, Mrs. Medina had a great suggestion, I'll work on that, to see if we could schedule a day where the board could tour the campus prior to the ribbon cutting. So I'm going to ask Terry and Tom Pace to see if we can set up a date where Terry and Tom could provide the Board of Education a tour of it before the ribbon cutting. So thank you for the suggestion, I appreciate that, next slide. And as part of that, you'll see that we are also refurbishing the outside of the legacy of Sturgis Building. So the new paint job, you see the front part of the paint job and the backside of the paint job. So we haven't started working on the interior part of the Sturgis Building. That we hope is in the future, if the board so wishes to move forward on looking at bonds, that would certainly be a facility that could benefit from bond money. But I know Tom's goal and vision has been that our block here, this represents kind of the 40s and 50s of San Bernardino. The district office kind of represents the 70s and 80s and the Welcome Center kind of recommends, represents the now. And of course, the police safety patrol department across the street will also be a, a modern building. So it's going to be a really nice area for the city of San Bernardino, so, next slide. And I want to congratulate two of our schools who earned the, it's the Green Ribbon Award. And those two schools are Norton Elementary and Kimbark Elementary, that is an award bestowed upon the schools by the California Department of Education. And they must show exemplary achievement in the following three areas, reducing environmental impact, improving health and wellness and providing effective environmental education. So we had two schools right here in the city of San Bernardino that earned that distinction. So I wanted to congratulate Principal Elizabeth Cochran and her staff at Norton and Principal Euridicey Fitz at Kimbark and everyone at their staff for helping our district shine. So congratulations to everyone at those two schools, next slide. And as was mentioned today, I love this picture. I think this picture epitomizes what Dr. Wyatt was sharing about Jaden Daniels. He is just a humble young man and understands the enormity of who he is and the positive impact that he can have on the students in our community. So I too want to personally thank Jaden Daniels for making the time every year to spend time with our kids and hopefully be that motivating factor to keep a kid from making a bad decision and stay on the route of making good decisions and making something good out of his life. Mary Rhone, Toby, San Bernardino Police Department, everyone else, as was mentioned, thank you guys for always coming together. I know those are not easy activities to organize or even monitor during the moment, but somehow you guys do it with such grace. And I know inside there's maybe some stomach grumblings, but you guys do it with grace, so I personally want to thank you. But Jaden, I just want to say personally, thank you for your continued interest in our kids and for being a positive role model. We love you for that, next slide. And then I'm happy to announce that the National School Public Relations Association, NSPR, has awarded our SBCUSD Shines 2030 pamphlet with the 2025 Gold Achievement Award. And so kudos to Mary Rhone because really it's about design and the messaging and how it has an impact on communication, marketing and engagement. I know Mary Rhone will be representing the district at the conference in Washington DC, so congratulations, Mary Rhone, and congratulations to the district because that's another way that our district continues to shine, so great job, Mary Rhone. Next slide. And this is more of a commercial and, and Dr. Rodriguez, if I, if I leave something out, please, I think this is important. This is the advertisement to our SBCUSD Back to School Extravaganza. As you see, it's on Friday, July 18th from 9:00 to 12:00 at Valley College. This is intended for all of our community, you know, our parents and kids that come down, get backpacks, get snow cones, learn about the district and all kinds of other activities. The one thing I recommend is, it's hot, I went last year and I wore a suit, big mistake. I'm going to go Scott Wyatt this year, I'm going shorts and flip flops, no, no, no. But it is a hot day, so I recommend polo shirts, get a hat, but I will be there, stay hydrated, but it's a good event. And Dr. Rodriguez, can you share a little bit of what, what, all the different tents that are there for our community to hear?
Thank you, sir. The Back to School Extravaganza is an opportunity for our students to get welcomed back to school. So we have, all of our departments within the school district will have a table out to inform parents about the things that they can do to support their children at home as well as our departments telling our parents and other community members what it is that we do to support students in the school district. We also have vendors there, we have community partners such as the Assistance League. We have young visionaries who have been out there with us, really just trying to support our families in every way possible. We will be giving out school supplies, backpacks, as well as clothing as for those students who may need it. So it's a wonderful event that our family engagement department puts on. It's actually something that we do every year, it's a signature program and we're very happy to be able to provide these resources to our families.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, thank you to your department for all your work on that, I appreciate that, next slide. So I want to thank a board member of Felicia Alexander and Kimber Sargent and Will Greer who, as was mentioned, is, are representing us at the California Association of Black School Educators. And I heard back today that the presentation that Dr. Greer and Ms. Sargent did was just amazing. So it's great to see our school district out there getting our name and programs out there known. And again, another example of our district shining and, and get, people getting to know all the great things that are happening here in the district. So Felicia, thanks for representing us there and of course, I will thank Kimber and Will for, for being there and doing such a great job in representing the district.
Thank you.
And the last slide is I can't finish without giving Dr. Wyatt, man, some kudos. Congratulations, sir. Dr. Wyatt just completed the School Business Management Certificate Program from USC. And let me tell you, that is a very rigorous program, that is not easy. So by finishing is a great accomplishment, so Dr. Wyatt, congratulations, we're very proud of you, my man, good job.
Fight on.
And that's all I have tonight, President Cevallos, thank you.
Wow, congratulations, Dr. Wyatt. I did forgot, I forget to mention something during my comments, I did want to just very briefly go back and, so I really wanted to just acknowledge the student records and enrollment departments for all their great work. I know that there's some family that had reached out over the summer and, you know, they, they've just gotten back really quickly and just for everything that they do that really doesn't get the spotlight. So in, with that being- So in, with that being said, if we can maybe bring them in recognizing them at one of our board meetings, I would, it would be really appreciated. So if we can just kind of add them to our schedule, that would be amazing. That is, that is it for the comments. 13.0 summary of board members' requests, review of requests, 13.1.
Good evening. The first request is from Mrs. Rosales Medina. She requested to have the Policy Subcommittee meet and look into having a parking policy. For example, entities who are able to come into our parking lots. Consensus was given by the board tonight. Dr. Wyatt requested for consensus for the board to agendize supporting San Bernardino Valley College's 100th event. I need clarity if there was consensus for that?
I think we did get consensus for Dr. Wyatt's, but I mean, we can do it now.
I, I support.
Yeah. Ms. Alexander? We're just going to add it for discussion on the agenda.
The next request is from Mrs. Alexander. She's curious to know if the district has had conversations with our partners such as Citi, Citi regarding funding. She's requesting for the district to go back and look at vendors with over $250,000 and up to, and up to see if they have social responsibility outreach. The next request is also from Mrs. Alexander. She's requesting what students have been assigned to the linked learning programs? What is the current inventory and the capacity of these programs? The last request is from President Sevales. She's requesting to agendize a recognition for the student records and enrollment departments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. 14.0 meeting adjournment, 14.1 in memoriam. The board would like to recognize and close the board meeting with a moment of silence in memory of a former district employee who recently passed away. Pat DeLisle, thank you. A dedicated educator and lifelong advocate for students, passed away peacefully at the age of 91, leaving behind a legacy of compassion, leadership and service. She devoted 40 years to the San Bernardino City Unified School District, beginning her career in 1968 as a classroom teacher. Over the decades, she served in various roles, including resource teacher, assistant principal, and ultimately, principal of Del Rosa Elementary School from 1995 to 2002. Pat retired in 2006, but came back to the district as a certified substitute until 2008. She was known for her unwavering commitment to student success and her ability to inspire both colleagues and children alike. Her impact will be remembered with gratitude and admiration. Thank you so much. 14.2 adjournment. Second. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Have a great week.